Bye.
Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, welcome. This is the Marion City Council regular meeting session for Thursday, November 19th, 2020. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands on foundation under God and with liberty and justice for all. Call please.
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Ms. Atkins?
Here.
Mr. Jensen?
Here.
Mayor Abu Wasli?
Here.
Mr. Brandt?
Here.
Ms. Cadelia?
Here.
Mr. Sternan?
Here.
Thank you. It's time we have a moment of silence. Thank you. First on our agenda this evening, we have two proclamations. The first one is for Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Day. I've asked Councilmember Atkins to read the proclamation. I believe we have Mary Ellen Oglesby here with us via Zoom. Are you here?
Yes, I'm here.
Hi. Would you mind introducing yourself and telling us the organization you're with?
I'm with the Michael W. Oglesby Foundation for Pancreatic Cancer.
Okay.
And I'm from Marion here in.
Wonderful. Would you like to come to the front and read the proclamation? Thank you.
Whereas pancreatic cancer has become one of our, one of our time's most devastating diseases, and whereas pancreatic cancer has surpassed breast cancer to become the third leading cause of cancer deaths in the United States and is projected to become the second leading cause by the year 2025. And whereas in 2020, an estimated 56,770 people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the United States with nearly 47,050 succumbing to the disease. And whereas when symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it is generally in later stages, and only 10% of pancreatic cancer patients are diagnosed when the disease is confined to their pancreas, and 91% of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first five years of diagnosis. And whereas pancreatic cancer is the only major cancer with a five-year relative survival rate in the single digits at just 9%. And whereas pancreatic cancer is the seventh most common cause of cancer-related death in men and women across the world. And whereas it is projected that approximately 580 Iowans will be diagnosed and 430 deaths will occur in Iowa in 2020, with an estimated 458,958 new pancreatic cancer cases diagnosed worldwide in 2020. And whereas the long-term health and well-being of the residents of Marion are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness and pancreatic cancer, and ongoing research into early detection causes an effective comprehensive treatments. Now therefore, I, Colette Atkins, on behalf of Nick Abu Wasli, Mayor of the City of Marion, Iowa, do hereby designate November 19th as Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Day.
Thank you. And would you mind giving that to Rachel? And then, Mary Ellen, would you like to say anything?
Just thank you so much for all the awareness that we're bringing about to the communities. The more awareness we can have about the disease, the quicker we will find a treatment and a cure.
Thank you. We're happy to make the proclamation and help bring awareness. The city clerk will mail you the proclamation, okay?
Thank you very much.
For joining us. We have a second proclamation that will be presented by Councilmember Harper for Small Business Saturday. Is Brooke Crowdy with us?
I'm here.
Brooke is the Director of Uptown Marion, and please go ahead.
Whereas the city of Marion, Iowa celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 31.7 million small businesses in the United States, and they represent 99.9% of all businesses with employees in the United States. Whereas, small businesses employ 60.6 million people, which makes up 47.1% of the country's total employee workforce. And whereas, in 2019, US consumers reported spending a record-high total of an estimated $19.6 billion at independent retailers and restaurants on Small Business Saturday. And whereas, Marion, Iowa supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods. And whereas, advocacy groups as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday After Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now, therefore, I, Grant Harper, on behalf of Nicholas Abu Wasli, Mayor of the City of Marion, Iowa, do hereby proclaim November 28th, 2020, as Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year.
Thank you, Grant. Brooke, would you like to say anything?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Small business is so important to our local economy, and this year has been really tough on small businesses, most of whom rely on fourth-quarter sales to really pull through the end of the year. So this year, of all years, we highly encourage people to get out and shop local, maybe not just on those holidays, but whenever you get the chance and whenever you feel safe. We have ShopWhereILive.com, which is a way to shop local online, too. So keep in mind those alternatives to shopping local this holiday season and support small business.
Thank you, Brooke. Okay, next on the agenda is an opportunity to meet Brady Quinn, who's one of the new members of the Medco team. Nick Glue, are you with us?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. This is always fun to do an introduction, which we'd like to be very personal in a virtual way, but here we are. So you'll recall that last year, we talked a lot with the council team and city staff about a strategy to help support our efforts to take our investment in business retention and building our relationships and being out in front of the business community to a whole nother level. And we created our Business Retention and Small Business Specialist. You'll also recall about a year ago, I introduced to you Dustin Kern. We all know Dustin well. Obviously, lots of things transpired in 2020, and one thing was a change with Dustin as well. So he remains on our team in a little bit more of a minor role as a project manager, doing some important things for us with the industrial park, with our new community build program. But we have recently added Brady Quinn to our team to serve in that new role, and I just wanted to have an opportunity for you to just hear a little bit about Brady. He's with us here this evening, and I want to introduce you to you, Brady, and we're just really thrilled to have him here with us. So Brady, with that, go ahead, man.
Yeah, hey, thanks, Nick. Hope you guys can hear me okay. But yeah, I'm born and raised here in Marion. I was a Marion High School grad. Really excited to kind of bring all my passions of small business entrepreneurship and Marion all into one place. I have a CPA background and am excited to start connecting with the community. I've been with the Marion Chamber on the treasure the last couple of years, so been involved in with the city and looking forward to this next challenge. I've been meeting with board members and other, I guess I'll call them connectors here over the last couple of weeks, just trying to get, you know, what is there, what does Medco mean to them? What does Medco, you know, what are we doing really well? And then also, what can we continue to do better? And, you know, what is my role in that? So really just trying to start building those relationships and getting to know people. So thanks, Nick, for the introduction, and thanks, council, for your time this evening, and look forward to meeting and hearing from all of you very soon. So thanks again.
Thank you, Brady. Congratulations on your new role.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have a public forum, which is a time set aside for comments from the public on topics listed on the agenda, but which are not associated with the public hearing. Did we have anyone send in comments or ask to address the council for this section?
We had a comment sent in earlier that was forwarded to council. He said he would be on tonight, but I'm not seeing him. It was from Randy Lucor, and it was regarding the storage facilities. But I'm not seeing that he's.
Would you mind just reading his communication, please?
He owns and operates three storage facilities around Lynn County, including one at 4099 Derrick Drive in Marion called All Store Storage. Seth Green alerted him to an upcoming change to the city's zoning map that would have a negative effect on current self-storage operations. According to the proposed zoning map, which would only allow self-storage in the M1 and M2 zones, there were going to be several facilities that would now be considered non-conforming properties according to the zoning code. These properties include Blair's Ferry Road Storage, Green Acres Storage, All Store Storage, Gary Hallup Storage, Tyco Storage, Ideal Storage, Iron Gate Storage, Baxter Storage, Prairie Hill Storage. He contacted Dave Hockett, and he told me the property being zoned residential was a mistake and would be fixed when Ward 1 is considered. He is still concerned for the other property owners. He read through the section of the code regarding non-conforming properties, and when he got to the portion about disaster-damaged properties, which had 50% or greater of their building's value and damage, they would not be allowed to rebuild unless it conforms to the new code. He wanted to paint a picture of why this is so concerning to him. One of the facilities at a space storage on Blair's Ferry Road in Palo sustained very significant damage in the derecho. He has three buildings there that would fall within the metric of having more than 50% damage. Even though the repair bill is high, it is almost all cosmetic damage. The buildings are still 100% occupied as they were when the storm hit. For a small business owner who has most likely just suffered the biggest loss setback of their life to be told their functioning business, which was built and operated in accordance to all relevant laws and codes, you can't rebuild. It's unacceptable. Dave Hockett tried to explain that the other local cities have similar non-conforming use laws, but he doesn't believe those cities changed zoning on every property like Marion is attempting to do. Under the proposed zoning map, every owner of a storage facility that he listed above could be told about their property if another devastating disaster hits our community, or maybe it is just a localized fire. Regardless the reason, changes need to be made to protect these existing lawfully-operated small businesses. If this change is allowed to go forward, as is, property values will be negatively affected. He was at the work session two days ago. He disagrees that many warehouses shouldn't be in commercial areas, but do understand the council's concerns in that regard going forward. Storage customers normally come from within a two- to three-mile area of the facility, so he believes it places undue burden on the consumer to force them to go to an industrial area for self-storage. The most important thing that needs to happen is we need to protect these existing businesses during the transition to the new zoning map.
Okay, thank you. Were there any other requests to address the council?
None other. No others have come in.
Okay. Then we'll move on to the consent agenda. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as follows. Items A1 through G2, Resolutions 28994 through 29007.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented, including items A1 through G2, Resolutions 28994 through 29007. Discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved. Turn over the meeting to the mayor pro temp.
Your Honor, I move to approve items A1 through F2, which includes Resolutions 29008 through 29011.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second for the consent agenda with Mayor Abu Wasli's abstention covering items A1 through F2, Resolutions 29008 through 29011. Is there discussion on any of these items? If not, all those in favor of these resolutions, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. They are approved with one abstention. I'll move the meeting back to the mayor.
Thank you. Moving on with the regular agenda under Administrative Services.
May I move to approve Resolution Number 29012, approving letter of understanding with the safety-first flagging regarding traffic control services at the 44th Street Debris Site in an amount not to exceed $70,000.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 29012, approving the letter of understanding with safety-first flagging regarding traffic control services at the 44th Street Debris Site in an amount not to exceed $70,000. Discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve Resolution 29012, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved. We have a public hearing at this time regarding fiscal year 2020/2021 budget amendment. The public hearing is now open. I see Zach is here for a presentation.
Good evening, Your Honor and City Council. What you have before you is a public hearing on the first budget amendment for FY21. This is part of our standard process we do at the beginning of fiscal year.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
This is a standard process we do at the beginning of fiscal year in order to take a look at some of our expenditures from the previous fiscal year and see how that might impact our budget going forward in this fiscal year, as well as looking at any other changes that have transpired in the first couple of months of services here in the, here in the city. Per Iowa Code, anytime that we go over in any of the designated program areas, public safety, public works, health, social services, et cetera, it requires us to do the budget amendment. This year, it's somewhat different being the derecho hit, and with that, that warranted a much larger amendment that we would normally find. If you can go to the next slide, Tara. So what you see before you is the summary tab of the different function layers that this would move the budget into for FY21. Capital projects is where we're, the majority of the derecho costs are being costed into. The difference between the revenues and expenditures are the, currently in there, the 15% unknown amount if the current 75% FEMA coverage and 10% state coverage moves forward based upon our estimates provided this last month on the derecho costs, as well as some of the other amendments that were included in a memo sent to City Council and available for the public to look over. Next slide, if you could. So looking at that in a different format of showing that by category, broke that into four categories. Our amendment line is on the revenue side about 671,000 and expenditure side 1.1 million. This would be more of our standard changes, primarily due to some economic development agreements that we had this year that have been effectuated that we wanted to include in the budget. On the CIP side, similarly, every year we'll have changes to projects from what we budget the year before to what actually happens. Part of this is the public service facility coming forward, as well as some of our other transportation, road-related projects. Moving into the derecho side, this will be the lion's share of this amendment put forth before City Council, and has been discussed previously. These are the preliminary estimates that we have as we're working through the reimbursement process with FEMA, as well as the cleanup efforts in the city. And then lastly, that small portion of 112,000, this would be related to any unused or budgeted expenditures that weren't spent in FY20, primarily due to some of the restrictions with COVID that are still required to move forward in this fiscal year. So that's why we recommend them to be moved forward. So the total amount this would impact the budget, it would be an increase in revenue of $41,255,980. And on the expenditure side, $55,665,715. So that's the amendment you have before you. I'd be welcome to take any questions you might have.
We'll wait for the questions for the resolution portion, okay?
Thank you.
At this time, the floor is open for comments from the public, either in favor or against this measure. Do we have anyone wanting to comment?
I have not received any.
Nothing has come in during this meeting or prior to the meeting? Did we receive any comments?
I have not.
Okay. Please note that for the public record. We'll wait just a little bit to make sure that no one is trying to email the city clerk. Okay, we'll close the public hearing.
Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution Number 29013, approving fiscal year 2020 to 2021 budget amendment.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 29013, approving the fiscal year 2020/2021 budget amendment. Discussion? Questions for Zach? Yes, go ahead, Grant.
Zach, just to clarify, back on that summary view of the budget, total budget amendment, I think our derecho-related costs were in the order of 40 million approximately, and the, that would, is treated as a revenue, and the expenditure was 47 million approximately. So that differential of roughly 7 million is what we are accountable for relative to deracial recovery?
Correct. It's not a straight 15% of the 75% from FEMA and the 15, or the 10% we're expecting from the state. There's also some insurance reimbursements in there, which is pretty much dollar-for-dollar. I believe it's about $3 million in there as well. But these are based on our preliminary estimates. Most recently, we've had some, as Public Service Director Ryan Miller has presented, we think we may have some more favorable figures coming forward with the waterways, but the figures presented before you still have the initial projections of around $20 million cleanup for that project.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Other questions, comments? Okay. We'll vote. All those in favor of Resolution Number 29013, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Your Honor, I make a motion directing staff to purchase two electronic-assisted trikes matching AARP grant funds in an amount not to exceed $5,500.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to direct staff to purchase two electronic-assisted trikes matching the AARP grant funds in an amount not to exceed $5,500. Discussion? Yes, go ahead, Renee.
Yeah, I think it was Will that asked about the location of the second two, and or was it Grant? I'm not sure, but it was a great suggestion, and I just wanted to echo that I feel like if there are going to be four, two should be on this side of the community, and if the library is willing to host them, it seems like a great spot. So that's it.
Thank you. Other comments? Go ahead, Will.
I just wanted to give kudos to Brooke Crowdy for doing what she did to get the AARP grant to begin with, to get the two, the two trikes. So good job, Brooke.
Thank you. Go ahead.
This, I'm sorry, this didn't occur to me on Tuesday during our work session, but do council members get to road test these before they're deployed?
Sure, you can work that out. Other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 29014, approving partial payment number three to Southern Disaster Recovery LLC for emergency debris removal services in the amount of $3,624,078.4.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 29014, approving partial payment number three to Southern Disaster Recovery for Emergency Debris Removal Services in the amount of $3,624,078.4. Discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve Resolution Number 29014, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 29015, Designating LA Disaster Relief LLC as a non-responsive bidder for the Emergency Waterway Debris Removal Project.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 29015, Designating LA Disaster Relief LLC as non-responsive bidder for the Emergency Waterways Debris Removal Project. Discussion?
Your Honor.
Yes, ma'am.
I do have a little bit of an update on that situation.
Please go ahead.
Mr. Kyle Adams, who's the owner of the company, did reach out to Mr. Miller and I today in a letter, asking that we provide that letter to council for consideration. However, we were past the time we could get it submitted via a as a, and I'm blanking right now, a review and discuss.
File.
Yes, receive and file. Thank you. And so I did review it and reviewed some of the information he provided, and I wanted to take a chance to update you on some of that. There's still a lot of confusing information relating to the illegal dumping, and his letter, he takes responsibility for that, but says it was a subcontractor. I was not able to verify that, so that's still, I still have some questions surrounding that. He did agree that the information provided to us from Dynamics Insurance was maybe an indication that he should not have relied on them. He did provide me with proof that they are an insurance firm and that the person who said she was a broker is a broker. So I would like to clarify that my statement regarding Ms. Aguilera as only a CPA was an actual direct quote from the gentleman, Mr. Aguilera, that I spoke with. That was not my own assessment. I was not able to find on my own record of her as an insurance broker agent anywhere, but apparently she is. I was provided with that documentation. That being said, I did reach out to the company, and that provides the Victory Bonds that they alleged to have in place, and there was no record of anyone getting a bond for this company in place. And even if they had, it was not valid in Iowa. Then on when, or sorry, Tuesday, right before I came in, I was provided with a contact at Skobin Carlson Insurance Company as someone who would be working with them on a bond. I called today. The gentleman I spoke with was Chad's maybe, and he told me that he had been contacted about three weeks ago by a consultant working with LA Disaster Recovery. And then he was contacted again by Mr. Adams, but at this point But at this point in time, they have not provided the documentation necessary to be able to determine whether or not they would qualify for a bond. So that being said, in determining whether or not we have a lowest responsible bidder, we have to consider that without factoring in any of the other proposals we've received. And whether or not, if this was the only proposal received, would we accept it or would we reject this proposal and reissue the R F P? My recommendation would be that based on the information we actually have, that we can actually confirm that we would reject that proposal and reissue the R F P. In this situation, we do have other proposals. And so my recommendation is to designate this as a non-responsible proposal and to move forward with the next lowest responsible bidder.
Thank you for that. Okay. Go ahead, Renee.
Yeah, I had just a question, and maybe it's more for Ryan, is just because there was, I totally I'm not discounting your reservations and it gives me pause as well. But just because there was a, a pretty sharp contrast in the pricing, is this, I'm confirming this is time sensitive. We need to move on this now as opposed to taking more time to spend time to uncover and find out if those things are legitimate. If you would, Ryan. Thank you. I think it was like fifteen thousand dollars a cubic yard or something. I don't know. It's enough that I feel like the question.
It is. This is very time sensitive. As you can see in the, in the title, it's emergency waterway debris removal. The reason why it's time sensitive is number one, we have a limit by FEMA, a window in which we can do debris collections. Those are category A debris collections. Second thing, talking with our debris monitors as well as title basin, our P A assistants that are now helping us, time is always of essence anytime you're working with me. So it is a very time sensitive project.
Okay, that just makes it easier to make the decision, but I just wanted to go on the record that we were kind of forced to move forward in this direction.
There is a difference in the proposals, obviously, in the price. One thing I can confirm is that we are in disagreement with the volume. L A Disaster Reef felt there was seven hundred to eight hundred thousand cubic yards of debris that had to be removed. We're not agreeing up with that. We think there's about three hundred to four hundred thousand cubic yards. So. Yep.
Thanks, Ryan. Other questions? Okay. We will vote on the motion. All those in favor of approving resolution number two nine zero one five, please say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number two nine zero one six awarding the emergency waterway debris removal proposal to Southern Disaster Re- Disaster Recovery LLC.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two nine zero one six awarding the emergency waterway debris removal proposal to Southern Disaster Recovery LLC. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion to approve resolution two nine zero one six, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion's approved.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number two nine zero one seven approving a bid for park fence repairs with Lifetime Fence Company Incorporated for the amount of thirty five thousand, two hundred and forty dollars.
Second.
It's been moved, it's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two nine zero one seven approving a bid for park fence repairs with Lifetime Fence Company for the amount of thirty five thousand, two hundred and forty dollars. Discussion. All those in favor of resolution two nine zero one seven, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved. The next item is a public hearing regarding Marion Public Library new building project, which is being continued from November fifth, twenty twenty meeting. So is there any action or do we just?
You would just note that the meeting, that the public hearing is still open and see if anyone wants to offer comments and then continue it to the next.
So the public hearing is, is still continued and, and open and the floor is available for any members of the public who wish to comment, either in favor or against these items. Do we have anyone who wishes, wishes to comment?
I have not received any.
And have we received any comments outside of the meeting?
You have not.
None, okay. And the public hearing will continue to remain open, right? So there's still opportunity for members of the public to, to voice their comments, whether in favor or in opposition. Okay, we'll move on to the next public hearing regarding the twenty twenty one thirty fifth street, seventh avenue traffic signal and turn lane improvements project. The public hearing is open. You have a presentation. Mr. Barlow?
Your honor, so this is the intersection of Seventh Avenue, Tenth Avenue and Thirty Fifth Street. This is replacing the existing signals that are out there and adding some islands. It will restrict northbound to westbound churning movement and eastbound to northbound to eliminate some of that confusion with the raised islands. And it will also extend Linden Drive to the south to Seventh Avenue for a right in, right out only maneuver. If you can go to the next slide, Terrell. So the city did receive five bids for this project, the low bid coming in from Rachi Construction at seven hundred and forty nine thousand, five hundred and eighty two dollars and forty seven cents. That was ninety six point six four percent of the engineer's estimate. It has a late start date of six twenty one of twenty one with fifty five working days and one thousand dollars per day in liquidated damages.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Are there any comments for the members of the public, either in favor or in opposition to this measure?
I have not received any.
Okay. Mike, have we received any comments outside the meeting?
So the D O T is a participant in this project and they have concurred with this bid.
Okay, and that's the only comment you've received outside the meeting?
Correct.
Okay. And I'm assuming no comments are coming in during the meeting. Okay. All right, we will go ahead and close the public hearing.
Your honor, I move to approve resolution number two nine zero one eight accepting bids and awarding contract to Rachi Construction Company regarding the twenty twenty one Thirty Fifth Street and Seventh Avenue Traffic Signal and Turn Lane Improvements Project in the amount of seven hundred and forty nine thousand, five hundred and eighty two dollars and forty seven cents.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two nine zero one eight accepting the bids and awarding contract to Rachi Construction for the Thirty Fifth Street, Seventh Avenue Traffic Signal and Turn Lane Improvements Project in the amount of seven hundred and forty nine thousand, five hundred and eighty two dollars and forty seven cents. Discussion. All those in favor of resolution two nine zero one eight, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
Sorry.
Everything okay?
Yeah, computers. Okay.
Well, the motion is approved. We'll move on to the next item.
Your honor, I move to approve resolution number two nine zero one nine approving contract and bond with, with Rachi Construction Company regarding the twenty twenty tenth street and Central Ave- Tenth Avenue Intersection Improvements Project in the amount of five hundred and forty three thousand, nine hundred and thirty four dollars and ninety four cents.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two nine zero one nine approving contract and bond with Rachi Construction regarding the twenty twenty tenth street, Central Avenue, Tenth Avenue Intersection Improvements Project in the amount of five hundred and forty three thousand, nine hundred and thirty four dollars and ninety four cents. Discussion.
Your honor, if we could get a motion to amend the motion to reduce the amount by one hundred dollars. There's a error.
The amount here is overstated by one hundred dollars?
Yes.
So is, is, is it, has it changed or is this a?
It should be five hundred and forty three thousand, eight hundred and thirty four dollars and ninety four cents.
I see. Okay.
So your honor, I make a motion to amend the resolution to be reflective of five hundred and forty three thousand, eight hundred and thirty four dollars and ninety four cents.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to amend the motion so that the amount of the contract reads five hundred and forty three thousand, eight hundred and thirty four dollars and ninety four cents. Discussion on the amendment. All those in favor of amending the motion to read five hundred and forty three thousand, eight hundred and thirty four dollars and ninety four cents, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved and the motion is now amended to award the contract and bond to Rachi Construction in the amount of five hundred and forty three thousand, eight hundred and thirty four dollars and ninety four cents. Any further discussion on the amended motion? Okay, all those in favor of resolution two nine zero one nine as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number two nine zero, two nine zero two zero authorizing a funding application to the Corridor Metropolitan Planning Organization for Surface Transportation Block Grant Funds in the amount of two million, five hundred and fifty one thousand and committing to provide local matching funds for the Marion Boulevard, Seventh Avenue, Tenth Avenue Project in Marion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two nine zero two zero authorizing funding application to the Corridor Metropolitan Planning Organization for Surface Transportation Block Grant Funds in the amount of two million, five hundred and fifty one thousand dollars and committing to provide local matching funds for the Marion Boulevard Seventh Avenue, Tenth Avenue Project. Discussion. So the local match, what's the maximum that will be, Mike?
So the maximum is an eighty twenty split with the city paying twenty percent. If we were to get the entire two point five million and change, it would take us up to seventy four point nine percent paid by the C M P O and the rest being paid by the, the city based on the preliminary numbers.
Okay. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor of resolution number two nine zero two zero, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Okay, the motion is approved.
Mayor, I make a motion to receive, file and discuss a request to defer a portion of the sanitary sewer hookup fees from Don and Kathy Kinsinger, four three five five, Twenty Ninth Avenue.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to receive, file, discuss a request to defer a portion of the sanitary sewer hookup fees for forty three fifty five, Twenty Ninth Avenue. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion to receive, file and discuss, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I make a motion to direct staff to develop a memorandum of agreement regarding the four three five five, Twenty Ninth Avenue Project to charge the sanitary sewer connection fee equivalent of one acre now and the rest to be charged at time of development of the rest of the property.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to direct staff to develop a memorandum of agreement regarding forty three fifty five, Twenty Ninth Avenue to charge the sanitary sewer connection fee equivalent of one acre at this time and the remainder to be charged at a time, at the time of development of the remainder of the property. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to receive, file and discuss legal memo regarding the request to install speed signs and warning devices and build a pedestrian bridge next to the Luke Or Bridge over Indian Creek.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to receive, file and discuss a legal memo regarding the request to install speed signs and warning devices and build a pedestrian bridge next to Luke Or Bridge over Indian Creek. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion's approved.
Your honor, I move to approve resolution number two nine zero two one approving contract amendment number two with Snyder and Associates Incorporated associated with the Indian Creek Trail Project regarding the timeline of services.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two nine zero two one approving the contract amendment number two with Snyder and Associates associated with the Indian Creek Trail Project regarding timeline of services. Discussion. All those in favor of resolution two nine zero two one, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Your honor, I move to approve resolution number two nine zero two two approving Bowman Meadows Sixth Edition Final Platte and Memorandum of Agreement for property located west of Alvernet Road and north of Archer Drive, Midwest Development Company.
Okay, my apologies. I need to turn over the meeting to Mayor Protem for this vote and discussion. Thank you.
Okay, we've got a motion. Did we have a second?
Second.
Okay, so we've got a motion, a motion and a second to approve resolution number two nine zero two two approving Bowman Meadows Sixth Edition Final Platte and Memorandum of Agreement for property located west of Alvernet Road and north of Archer Drive. Any discussion on this? All those in favor of approving resolution two nine zero two two, please say aye.
Aye.
Please say no. The resolution is approved with one abstention. I'm gonna move the meeting back to the mayor. Mayor, I make a motion to receive and file a request for a building permit prior to approval of a final site development plan for electric specialty manufacturing located at sixty four fifty one Partners Ave- Avenue.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to receive and file a request for a building permit prior to approval of a final site development plan for electric specialty manufacturing at sixty four fifty one Partners Avenue. Discussion. Yes, go ahead, Randy.
Thank you, your honor. I would like to first of all, thank Ned Glue for the follow up information on this and I apologize, I was, I wasn't able to reach back out today. I want to also thank Tom Trayharn on this particular topic. I just want to always, I guess, our processes, I always feel need an advocate and a voice to simply just reiterate again why we do have our processes. Regardless of who brings these forward, I know that there's been some topics in discussion of, well, it seems like the city always has one or two of these every year. And I have always been a huge advocate and I appreciate, you know, Tom bringing this up and, and sharing some, always some pushback from a particular council member or council members in general, but knowing how processes work and, and thoroughly understanding this, I just want to remind the council as well too on what all goes in these, even though we say that these final approvals have to come back before the council, we never know when those are going to happen. It could be with another seated council. There could be multiple changes. There always is that opportunity to have alterations that I think could potentially always put a municipality back into a not favorable position, even though we say that they, they take the full responsibility of that, it always will come back for some type of discussion again in the future. Little things like the police department, the fire department, building inspections, things that need to be taken into consideration, square footage, heights, the use of this. There are so many things that get involved with these that it always concerns me and always will come back again to, to leverage back against why we have our processes. So that always kind of concerns me a little bit. For that, I will be not in favor of pushing this through. Again, it's not due to the individuals. I'm sure everything is been looked at. I know it's been discussed. I've, I have reached out. I've, I've talked to individuals. I know the derecho has played a big role in this and I of all people know what the derecho has, has done to not only commercial businesses, but residential as well too. So I just want to go again to say, when we approve something like this, that we allow them to step in and disrupt our current processes by expediting and pushing through something that has either been exempted or waived. And I would like to just remind everybody again too, we've already identified and addressed that we are overworked and understaffed in certain particular areas there. So I ask us to be very cautious about how we do this. We have opened that can of worms and I just think it's time for us to reconsider how we do process that. So I just wanted to go on the record with that and again too, with all due respect for all parties involved with this, I understand the process. January rolls around every, every twelve months again and I know that the frost in the ground is going to impede some of these things, but I just want to remind the concerns that some people have and I'm one of those, so thank you.
Okay, so this, this motion is about receiving and filing the request, so you're welcome to make your comment or is it more appropriate on the next item?
Next one, thank you.
Is there any comments about the motion to receive and file? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to receive and file the request, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve Resolution number two nine zero two three, approving waiver of the city code to allow issuance of a foundation permit prior to approval of the final site development plan for property located at sixty-four fifty-one Partner Avenue Electric Specialties Manufacturing, subject to execution of the whole harmless agreement.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution number two nine zero two three, approving the waiver of the city code to allow the issuance of a foundation permit prior to approval of the final site development plan for the property located at sixty-four fifty-one Partners Avenue Electric Specialties Manufacturing, subject to execution of a hold harmless agreement. Discussion? Yes, Mr. Harper?
I just want to first say I appreciate Randy's comments earlier in terms of process compliance and using extreme caution of when process variation needs to be considered. At least in this particular occurrence, two factors entered in, into my mind. Number one is, this, this request is it's accelerated because of the damage to their existing building, given the derecho. And the other part of it that I thought was a mitigating factor in consideration is the fact that we're only talking about the foundation. If we were talking about exterior walls being erected or more complex construction, I wouldn't think that a process variation or variance would be appropriate, so I, I think understanding that there may be some underground utility considerations, water lines, that kind of thing, I think the, I think the, the risk is reasonably well contained since it is it's foundation specific and I didn't discern that fire or other inspections would be disabled as this project goes forward.
Any other comments? Yes, go ahead.
Yes, I would follow suit with Randy and Grant in the process and being just making sure that we are following our processes and procedures. Just a couple of follow-up questions. Tom, can you remind us, staff was in they were okay with adjusting the process for this particular project, right?
Correct, correct. We, what, and I'll just tell you, between Tuesday and Thursday, what I've done, I know there's some questions on, on the actual what happens with the issuance of the waiver or the, the permit. I did make indication that while this waiver does waive the the process for the final site development plan review, which is really going to the Planning Commission in the first couple of weeks in December and then a final approval of the overall plans at earliest mid-December, at latest, potentially the first week in January. So that's what the process we would follow is, it's more of the planning side of it. So I reached out to Medco, Nick, and just said, listen, we got the plans, I think on Thursday or Friday last week. They were distributed for internal review yesterday or today. They will be returned with comments next Wednesday, which is the day before Thanksgiving break. And I said the earliest we would be able to provide the permit would be on Monday, November thirtieth. Everything, so, so from an internal review perspective of the building plans and such, we're, we're doing all of that. It's really the process for the Planning Commission and City Council to see the exterior of the building, the elevations, to make sure it meets the design guidelines of the Medco overlay ordinance and that, and such, so I think that's an important point that the council needs to know and to Randy's point, we're the internal staff is very concerned when, when just a permit would be issued without some of those other entities being involved in a conversation, so, so I did lay that expectation out and indicated that to Medco and, and I think that was being relayed to the owners of the property and from what I understand, they were fine with that, so we're, we're hoping to be able to issue the permit on the thirtieth, but all internal reviews of the building plans and footings and would, would be conducted as normal, so I don't, I don't know if that confused the issuer, if I just talked too much about it, but we are, we're definitely going to see all those things that we need to see before we issue a permit.
Okay, thank you. Second question, I was, I logged in on Tuesday and it was sort of in and out, so I may have misheard this. But did fire say something about this and, and there was a concern or was that not a part of this conversation? Does anybody have any information on that?
I can. I can speak to that, yeah. This, Mr. Hanson from the Fire Department did, did raise some questions and in particular, there's been instances in the past where, you know, the, the foundation may have been fine, but once the building discussion was had, you know, maybe the size of the building required sprinklers or there may have been firewalls that need to be included, which caused some concern with the how the foundation was laid out and maybe issued prior to review of the full building plans. And that was, I think, to what Randy was saying, you know, there's a lot that goes into a building review and you go just look at the foundation in itself and then say, oh, it's all good, issue the permit without looking at the full building plans, because there could be other things that impact what has to happen in the foundation from the building perspective that you need to, to know. And so the, the good thing about this project is the owners were able to supply us with all the relative information that we needed. We had that conversation yesterday and I, I can speak confidently that, that the Fire Department made their concerns known and were, were a part of the conversation and being, and indicated that they would be able to get the review done and before the thirtieth, so that's one of the reasons I wanted to just follow up with everybody and be able to say, you know, this is when we can issue the permit based on our review process internally.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Tom, am I remembering correctly from Tuesday that Gary did look at the, the foundation portion and was okay with it or?
Yeah, Gary, Gary felt comfortable with the foundation. I think there was some other, other department, like the site plan hasn't even been reviewed internally. So that was distributed, like I said, yesterday or today for review and to be brought back on, on, on Wednesday, so the waiver and issuance of the foundation permit prior to approval of the final site development plan would allow for the permit to be issued potentially thirty days in advance. But that doesn't mean that we're waiving any of the other internal review processes, so.
This, this means that they can go ahead and put in the foundation, but the rest of the review will still take place?
Absolutely, yep.
Okay. Other discussion, other questions or requests for clarification on anything?
Yeah, so, Tom, based on your description there, I think maybe to simplify what I commented on, basically this is a scope adjustment in terms of what adhering to your formal process. Everything else will go according to that. All we're doing is accelerating and taking out of that activity stream the foundation and the foundation has already had, that plan has already been reviewed. Is that another way of saying it?
Well, we, the foundation plans have been reviewed, but the site plan still needs to be reviewed as well as some of the building plans relative to the Fire Department to ensure that there's no changes to the foundation plan from the building, because of the way the building is being built, the use of the building and such, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Other discussion, questions? Other thoughts on this? Okay, we'll vote. All those in favor of approving Resolution number two nine zero two three, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no.
No.
We have one no, the motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution number two nine zero two four, approving Rookwood Estates Second Edition Final Platte and Memorandum of Agreement for Property Located South of Prairie Ridge Avenue East of Scott Street.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to approve Resolution number two nine zero two four, approving Rookwood Estates Second Edition Final Platte and Memorandum of Agreement for the property located south of Prairie Ridge Avenue and east of Scott Street. Discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve Resolution number two nine zero two four, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution number two nine zero two five, approving the Nottingham Hills Ninth Edition Final Platte Memorandum of Agreement for Property Located South of Boyson Road, west of Nottingham Hills Drive. This will be BBAK Investment Limited.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution number two nine zero two five, approving Nottingham Hills Ninth Edition Final Platte and Memorandum of Agreement for the property located south of Boyson Road and west of Nottingham Hills Drive. Discussion? All those in favor of approving Resolution number two nine zero two five, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution number two nine zero two six, approving the Prairie Ridge Estates Eighth Edition Final Platte and Memorandum of Agreement for Property Located East of Crestwood Lane and South of Robinwood Lane.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to approve Resolution number two nine zero two six, approving the Prairie Ridge Eight Estates Eighth Edition Final Platte and Memorandum of Agreement for the property located east of Crestwood Lane and south of Robinwood Lane. Discussion? All those in favor of Resolution number two nine zero two six, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve Ordinance Number two zero dash one two, amending Chapter one sixty-two of the Marion Code of Ordinances relating to the Electrical Code. It's a second, second consideration.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to approve Ordinance Number twenty dash twelve, amending Chapter one sixty-two of the Code of Ordinances relating to the Electrical Code. This is the second consideration. Discussion? All those in favor of the second, approving the second consideration of Ordinance Number twenty dash twelve, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I make a motion directing staff to review Mini Warehouse Regulations and Develop Standards for Climate Controlled Self-Storage Facilities within the BR Regional Business Zoning District.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to direct staff to review Mini, Mini Warehouse Regulations and Develop Standards for Climate Controlled Self-Storage Facilities within the BR Regional Business Zoning District. Discussion? Tom, this would be, this would be developing proposed regulations, right? I mean, they're not, they're not going to go into effect until council has seen and approved them?
Correct. What I, the, the process upon which I would follow would be to do an internal review of the ordinances, develop some, develop them in-house and I, I have a feeling what we'll probably want to do is reach out to some folks on this, just because there's been, you know, the public comment this earlier in the meeting and then also Mr. Green's comments, so I will probably try to try to have a little conversation about this in the communities. And then, once the ordinance is in place, we would probably present a draft of it to the City Council and ultimately go back to Planning Commission for review and recommendation and then there's be a public hearing at the City Council once again and three readings of that ordinance, so once I get a little more time to take a look at this and see what we're talking about and what kind of public comment we want to have on this, we can put together a timeframe for the City Council. I can provide that in memo or something, I don't know that it necessarily needs to be presented in a meeting or something, but, so we'll get that started after the action.
Okay, any other questions, discussion, comments? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved. At this time, we have a twenty twenty storm response update. On?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. So the council took action tonight to award the next major phase of the community recovery from the derecho and that's awarding the contract for the removal of the debris in the waterways. We are at the phase where we're really winding down the pickup in the right-of-ways, but you will still see trees coming down as our contractor comes around and continues to remove trees that are not likely to survive the storms, so you'll continue to see activity in that arena likely out there for quite a while. But the major equipment would be starting to show up eventually out in the areas along our waterways. Ryan Miller's been working with the company to scope it so we can get an idea of exactly how many cubic yards we think we're going to be responsible for cleaning up out in those areas, the sequencing and that'll allow us to then notify neighborhoods when they might start to see big equipment running through their backyards and coming up and down next to the streams, so that'll look a little different, there'll be different types of equipment than what the community may have become accustomed to so far. And then, the council's also going to be taking action on, in December for the issuance of our bridge financing since we don't know exactly yet how long it will take for us to receive our reimbursements from FEMA. On the positive side, I would hope that over the next couple of weeks, everybody gets a chance to go up next to City Square Park and check out the chainsaw carving project that's going on. They're moving very, very quickly. I mentioned to someone today, if I tried to move a chainsaw that fast, I would probably come back, sand some fingers or limbs, so it's pretty impressive what they're doing and it's a great project to help us raise some funds to get started with renewing our tree canopy across the community.
Questions? Comments, anything? Okay. At this time, we have a public forum, which is time set aside for comments from the public on any item that was not on the agenda this evening. Are there any comments or anyone waiting to address the council?
I have not received any.
Okay, remind members of the public that, that they are welcome to send in emails and communications to the council at any time outside of the meeting. And our email addresses are on the city website. Council discussion, start with Steve.
No comments.
Randy?
I would just like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. We're once again, going to go through a national, or excuse me, through another major holiday under circle special circumstances, so I hope everybody stays safe and healthy and and, thank you.
Yeah, a couple of things. So Small Business Saturday is coming up and if you feel safe, I encourage you to get out and support our businesses or jump online. It is a really big deal, especially for our community and the good work that folks have done to bring such interesting good businesses to our community, so that's a big one. Make sure you, you do your best to support those folks and I just wanted And I just wanted to respond to Grant's thought on trying out the trikes. I thought, well, maybe the, the city council members that already qualify for AARP could be the first in line to try out those trikes. So not sure who that would be, but something to consider as we create some criteria around that. That's all.
Will?
I got nothing.
Randy?
Yeah, two things. One, I just want to echo what Randy said about Thanksgiving and hope everyone has a safe one. Secondly, just want to comment on the tour I took. I mentioned Tuesday that I was going to see the YMCA and so Sarah Minster was kind enough to take me through yesterday. And it's really remarkable. It's a beautiful facility. You know, it's, it's very provocative from the outside with all the glass and, and just walking through. It's amazing how much open space there is, how intentional everything is laid out. I'm excited for this partnership with the Y and our parks and rec and programming. Unfortunately, it's going to open under the guise of social distancing and these kinds of things. So that's a little sad that we can't open the doors and let the community flood in and really see it. But to the degree that I, you know, I know they're working on the unveiling in January so that people can get in. So I just wanted to thank Sarah and, and really promote for people to take a look at it and, and get involved once it's open. Thanks.
Thank you.
So I think first off, I want to just respond to Colette. I have been a card-carrying member of AARP for well over a decade. And so I would just hope that that puts me first on the list for test rides. Thank you, Colette. Regarding Thanksgiving, we are going to be challenged with the restrictions that we need to be cautious of and compliant with. But as I think back over this year, there is a myriad of things to be happy and thankful about. Our community storm response was, in, in a word, astounding. And it, you know, that happened at the neighborhood level, that happened at the family level, that happened at the community level. And that is one great platform of thanks that I know I'll be thinking about is our storm response. The other thing, which is a little bit more personal and I'm thankful for is all of the very nice comments that I received, text messages, emails, cards, and also a floral arrangement that Rachel and Alicia sent to me on behalf of the city regarding the passing of my dad. So, thank you.
Thank you. For my part, I would also encourage everyone to stop by and see that the carvings that are, that's, that are going on. These are a great group of Lynn Mar students who have put together this project through Iowa Big and would encourage everyone to check out the online auction, which begins on the twenty-third, I believe, through the twenty-ninth. And sixty percent of the funds will be donated to Trees Forever for a Marion replanting project. Also, I want to thank the Parks Department for the great job they're doing so far with decorating for the holidays and the lights in the park. It's already a noticeable difference from what we've done in the past and want to thank, thank them for that. Thank the council for making the commitment for matching funds that has helped with that. And thank a number of the businesses. I did some independent fundraising in the community and those businesses are listed in the messenger that will come out on Monday that donated an additional eight thousand dollars combined that helped with these purchases of, of the, of the lights. So please check those out. The messenger will have the date for the last possible day to call Public Service to pick up derecho tree debris. So encourage everyone to please get that word out about that if anyone still has tree debris to be picked up, to call Public Service and get that done before that date. Also, the Marion Chamber Foundation has announced the grant program for the ratio relief. Individuals can apply for five hundred, up to five hundred dollars and businesses can apply up to fifteen hundred dollars. These are funds that came to the community and donations for derecho relief. So please do get the word about, out about that too. They're taking applications. We had our first meeting of the equity, Community Equity and Inclusion Task Force, and we are reactivating the COVID Community Recovery Task Force with our meeting tomorrow. If anyone might have, anyone might have noticed, we, the county did approve, the county supervisors did approve the regulation of the Lynn County Health Department for masks. And I would be supportive of, of our council endorsing that. So for the consideration of the council. For Small Business Saturday, just a reminder that you don't have to only shop in person if you're not comfortable doing that. There's a way to support our small businesses by, by shopping online with shopwhereilive.com. Shopwhereilive.com is a, is a way to shop and support local businesses online. Would encourage everyone to please wear masks and protect each other and wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you. Okay, we do have a closed session on the agenda this evening.
Mayor, I make a motion to adjourn to closed session regarding litigation as permitted under section twenty-one point five one C of the Code of Iowa, two separate matters. And regarding personnel matters, evaluation of city manager performance as permitted under section twenty-one point five one I of the Code of Iowa, one matter.
Second. Okay, it's been moved in seconded to adjourn to closed session under section twenty-one point five one C and twenty-one point five one I of the Code of Iowa. Do we have the council's statement?
Thank you, your honor. I have reviewed the proposed subject matter for the closed session and find the same to be appropriate under Iowa Code sections twenty-one point five C and twenty-one point five one I.
Okay, and do we have the city manager's approval?
Yes.
Okay. Any comments or discussion before we vote? Please go ahead.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Ms. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Abu Osley?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Cadellia?
Yes.
Mr. Sternett?
Yes.
Okay. So we are now adjourned to closed session. We'll return to open session at the end of the closed session. Thank you for joining us.